So I don't take the one out.
That's why your business is what bothers you.
So I don't. Enjoy your lives, mercy likes. Somebody will throw a bomb in. Heads up.
Oh, you're here.
I need a rest.
Oh, yes.
I saw you there today. But he didn't say that to me. It's perfect. Just go up. It's on the season end line of tolling. Are you sure? I wanted two point two five.
Okay, so you would know.
I knew.
Dad, no, this year we were the.
You want to shoot? Someday. I like it when I forget. What else Chris?
People get on boards and they don't want to. If you do this, sure. You know, if you don't want.
It's better.
Because you'll.
Play out. What side did you find out was expensive for four thousand dollars? Well.
Exactly.
You have this question. Good luck tomorrow. You too.
I know, right?
But they did it for like two years to get that average.
How are you? Heart of seed.
See, I didn't want to break all contracts. What do you want?
And I'm in Texas, so. Well, actually, when. I understand I got a lot out from them. And they were making far. Risk. I mean, I'm from Texas. I enjoy going.
That was telling me that for.
Yeah. Yeah. And he made, I said, I wouldn't use it in the risky. Because what you needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, ours isn't. Corn red. Long red.
It's.
Yeah.
Um, it's pretty good.
I think. Turned out to be pretty good. No, you're right.
No, I think that's a lot of things. I think it helps.
It helped have the CPO and the.
Yeah.
That's me.
Oh, I get to. That worries everybody and that's what you want up last night.
And then their job is you. That's. That's. Because it's not.
Yep.
Well, you can talk about your.
That's what I'm talking about. My.
On the casual regular council meeting on Monday, number four, two thousand twenty fourth quarter. Please direct to the interpretation in a pleasant meeting.
Very heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have of doing your work here. We pray that you give us the direction and the guidance that we need to help the city to grow. We pray that you help us to make the right decisions, Lord, and be with the election tomorrow. Guide and direct everybody there, and we know you're still in charge, for we see things in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I get the approval of the agenda? I do would like would like to make one amended under new business, and that would be pilot planning for water, sewer, and garbage.
And when I make a motion that we accept the amended agenda.
A second.
I think you give a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Can I have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session of Monday on October twenty first, two thousand twenty four?
So moved. Second.
Give a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business Verbal, number one, Sandra Martin, event.
So when I was president of the chamber, I went out to other communities in other places and tried to bring stuff to our community. Well, since I stepped down from that position because of some incidents, I have still been talking to other communities. And one of the communities came to me and said, could you or would you run our new event in Newcastle? And I said, holy jumping jellyfish, let me check this out, because it is a big event, and it will be an annual event every year on the week that we choose to do it. And it is, we're trying to get a name of it, and it's because I've had nineteen people from Montana to Illinois to Indianapolis to Wyoming to Idaho all over call me and ask if they could come. And it's, we're just going to do an all around car expedition, but what it is, is we're taking all the cars. We'll have anywhere from three hundred to five hundred cars here for four days. It'll be a Wednesday through a Sunday. We've already talked to, well, when I got asked for this, I guess we're back up. I asked Pam to join me, and so there's six of us that are on this board that are going to do this. And Richard, which is the guy that runs the drag racing out of Sturgis where they have the Camaro one, he's going to come down and run our drag racing here. So what it is, is we get all these cars here, and we're looking at two to three thousand people is what they've been having ten of lead to these events. We're going to do an autocross, they have a big banquet, we do a drag race, and we contacted the airport, and they said we were allowed to use that, no.
The airport had to talk with the FAA.
Oh, that's right.
So we, they have not gotten back to me in regards to that, but I did talk with the. And they said that we could use the stretch from the high school to the port of.
That's right.
Because we do have the bypass or emergency vehicles and traffic can go. We just had to notify them of the closure of the road, so they can let patrol and all public.
Correct. And I have talked to the gentleman, oh, David, is that his name, that did the car show here? And he is willing to help us. Dick. He is willing to help us. We've talked to most of the restaurants, most of the hotels, and we've talked to a couple of sponsors that are willing to help us. I guess hear this here. It's not going to cost the city any money, but we are going to make a heck of a lot of money on revenue that's coming here. We're not asking you to participate or do anything, but I do need to have it to where you're aware that we may need law enforcement on, and we may need some of the streets closed, and we might ask for some help, but they want to come here and do it every year, and we will have the poker run. We're also having a big event. We will have a night event at the fairgrounds that we're looking at. I've talked to a couple of comedians that may come in for that night, and so it will be for everybody in our community to have something like that.
We also park with the school, and the school is open to using the parking lots, either the elementary or the high school for obstacle courses. It just depends which one's being redrawn at that time.
Correct. So we've done a lot of research to do what we're doing. The guy from Florida that called me, he's been running his in Florida for twenty eight years, and he's very experienced, and they're coming here, and the drag strips bringing all the equipment. Plus, the drag strip guy, Richard, that has all of his equipment and stuff, he's insured. He's going to ensure, and everybody signs a waiver, that if they choose to do it, and it's their cars. It's them doing it, we're just spectators. We're just the people that are there to do it, but it will bring a huge revenue to our community.
And this is in a month alone?
Correct. Well, they want to do it the week after Sturgis, but because they have the other one that's going to, the other one that's going to Washington, they asked if we could do it the end of June. Correct.
They still have to do it.
Oh, correct, yeah. Yeah. We're also doing a poker run, and I've contacted people in Upton, Morecroft, on the hills to go around, because they said when they come and they go to Sturgis, they've already seen the Black Hills, they've already done that, and well, we don't want our money to go to South Dakota. We'd like to keep it here, so I have contacted everybody on this, and I've even contacted a couple of places in Gillette so that we could actually have a loop and a circle for them to come around. They can't go on dirt roads with their cars, everything's got to be paid, because some of those cars are very expensive and low. They are very low, yes. So. I guess unless you have questions. None? I'm shocked.
There's just a lot of information, and it sounds like you've done a lot of research. Do you think that it's going to happen?
Well, I know for a fact it's going to happen, whether it happens here or it happens to Upton, because I've already talked to them, and they will take it. So I know it's going to happen, because I've got too many people that are calling me and doing it, and I'm already getting registrations. We're already doing our thing, so I know it's going to happen. It's either going to happen here, because I live here, and I'd like to bring something to this community, or it's going to happen in Upton.
Well, it sounds like a fantastic event, so looking forward to seeing if it if it takes shape.
I think it's going to be fantastic for our little business.
Oh, I do too, and when I talked to the restaurants, so here's what their concerns were, and some of the motel concerns, is that we didn't have enough lodging or places for that amount of people to come here if they do that. And we're hoping, the first year Pam and I had discussed that maybe we should start it off slow, maybe only have two or three hundred cars instead of way up there at five, but you've got to consider some of those people are coming with two or three people, so that brings it in. When they did the last one, like I said, he said they had over five thousand participants that came and watched, so we would have to have someone for them to go and watch. We are going to think about the stands of where we can put this, wherever we have the drag strip, because we have to remember and know that this is where you'll come and create, is that we're going to have the border off, we can't have anybody on the road, and that would be our liability, is to make sure nobody's on that stretch that we have right there, so that they're not getting anywhere near the cars are on it. And then on Saturday, was it Saturday we decided there last night, oh, for the daytime, right? We want to shut off Main Street, and all the cars want to come from Main Street all the way up, depending on how many we have, past the courthouse, so that everybody can come down and look. And I contacted a few vendors also to come in on our street and do a vending for the whole day.
We also talked to Arts Council, because they did.
Yes.
Mr. Boss and about having a concert thing that night, too, kind of having that as one of their.
Correct.
Well, we do a concert.
Series.
Born some rats at the end of June anyway, and that'd be perfect.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tom, I forgot, but that's what you guys decided on the Arts Council, you were.
And I did talk with Guy Phillips at the Why Not and here locally, and he said he could help with the, like, orange fences to keep people from going onto the highway if we didn't use the highway. So even the highway department will be involved.
Correct.
Just the city.
So when we get further ahead on this, we decided, since we're going all the way till June now, because they've got this other event, when we get further ahead and we get everybody, we're going to try to get a set number, and that's going to cost them to come here, because we're going to do shirts for them, and they'll all have wristbands, and so a lot of the places said if they have the wristband for here, and it's just the drivers and their whoever's in the car with them, but it's not local people, then they get the discount, especially on our poker run that does that. Friday night is the night that we thought about having a comedian come in, and there's a comedian in Montana Billings. I've spoke with him several times, and he's willing to come down and do a show Friday night, so that would be a revenue at the fairgrounds, because we are going to charge per head to come into that comedian show that night to make money, and the money that we make on that will go to our fund here, but we'll still pay for all the entities that we're doing. And then Saturday night, it will be the Main Street, which will be the band.
And we still need to talk with the fire department, any?
Yes, yes.
And you don't have a name quite yet.
Well, they want to do it, it's a stupid name, and I told them, no, since I'm the president, we're not having a dumb name. I love to get outvoted, so we're going to end up with this stupid name.
How about Shannon Showtime Spot?
Okay. It's better than what they chose, but we haven't made a decision on a name yet, but we do know where we are and the people that are coming. And when we're done and we get everything done, we're going to make an agenda for you guys like Craig and the police department that need to be involved and the highway department, and we'll do a map of what we're doing, even on the poker run day, which will be Thursday, they'll do the poker, they'll all get in on Wednesday. We're doing the poker run on Thursday, and then the races and everything will start Friday, and then Saturday we'll do downtown, and then Sunday, they'll either stay here or hang out or go home or whatever, but we don't have anything else of an event that day.
Just just ready to perform, so we can fill out for our events.
Yes.
So would the timeframe be the twenty fifth or the twenty ninth of June?
The end of June, that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That's what they're looking at, we were going to do it in August, right after Sturgis, but there's too many of them that are great, other races.
So we do have the Paul Scoover Union next week?
In July.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is great. Do it.
This was just kind of a head.
And we can revisit it if you guys want to think about it, and I'll get everybody down on the agenda and how many. We're trying to at least get what we can of cars, right now we've got over a hundred and fifty that have already registered. So I do know that if we have it, there's already going to be that many. I need a roll every year, because it goes out in their magazines, they're doing free ads for us for Newcastle in the magazines, if we have it here. And so it'll go to all the cars that they travel all over from Florida to Minnesota to wherever they all come from. And if you don't want to have it here, I understand, we'll move down the road.
Why would anybody turn it down?
Well.
No, no one's going to turn it down. Newcastle, I think, would be a good place for this. You're right about the people and where we were going to put people in rooms. We don't have a lot of rooms, we might have to talk with hotels, and it's, well, Upton's got one.
Well, they've got that new one on the other side. Yeah, so we did talk to, some of them are bringing campers, and they haul their cars, so they already have, what do they call them? Call har, car haulers, where they have the camper and the car hauler on one. So they are bringing those, so I did take a thing, and I asked them, who needs a room and who's going to stay here? Some of them are going to stay in Sturgis, but ninety five percent of them are staying in Newcastle. So we did talk to all of the motels, and they're willing, as long as we give them enough time to block out that frame for some of our folks that are coming here. The other thing is, they wanted to know if you had, or if we could use, like, maybe the school gym, they just do sleeping bags.
We would have to talk to.
That's it, we would ask if that's maybe what we could use, but if not, they'll figure it out, they're adults.
We have seniors, I remember, gym.
That's true. Maybe the seniors and all let us use their gym, that's true, thanks, Tom.
If they're all bringing campers and car haulers and stuff like that, maybe we could approach some of the landowners in the area and see if they can park in a field or.
They won't be in a field with.
They won't be in a field with cars, nothing, or nothing, probably on their cars. Some of those cars are. Low on a lot of money.
So that means the units out there at the fairgrounds, they wouldn't, they couldn't use those.
They have their campers, but they're with their trucks left out there, but they still have to park their cars somewhere else. And we've already offered, because my road's paved, my husband have already offered, we've got acreage out there where they can come and park in our acreage.
They can park in those, we'll park in lots if they have cameras.
Correct.
You could, you could park a Chevrolet four oh nine nineteen sixty four in my garage.
Yeah, I don't know where. So the other thing that besides the drag races, the autocross, and go through the cones, things that they were thinking about doing, they also said that they, some of them, not all of them, but some of the riders, just like what Garrett does on the Mud Bons, they're willing to give rides. Some of, somebody that would like to ride in one of the cars, they're willing to give rides, and they're not charging. You want to drive it? Okay, let me talk to somebody. Let me see what I can do for you. So we can either revisit it, you guys can let me know, or so that I can let.
What do you need to know?
Well, I just need to know if it's all right if I bring it here or not.
Support, support.
I do, I need support, I need to know.
Are we going to support this? Everybody raising hand, you want to support it? Okay.
Okay, we're good, then I'll count up now, thank you guys for your time.
I get a net form for.
Oh, yeah, Stacy will give me one. I just poured my name, okay?
Thank you.
You bet.
In my garage.
Citizens Business in Writing, number one, Pinnacle Bank Depository of Public Funds. So we have a letter dated April seventeen, two thousand twenty four, to whom it may concern pursuant to the requirement of Wyoming Statute nine dash four dash eight one east. Formal application is made by Pinnacle Bank Wyoming, a corporation organized and existing under the laws of Wyoming and having its office and principal place of business in the city of Newcastle and the county of Weston and the state of Wyoming to be designated a depository for public funds. Pinnacle Bank Wyoming agrees to furnish the securities as provided for in section nine dash four dash eight twenty one to cover public funds that may be deposited by the city of Newcastle, Wyoming, or Newcastle, Wyoming. Furthermore, Pinnacle Bank Wyoming agrees to comply with Wyoming Statute nine dash four dash eight zero six by order of the Board of Directors, Pinnacle Bank Wyoming, Mar, Marlene Bogner.
Your Honor, I move that we accept the Pinnacle Bank as a depository of public funds for the city of Newcastle.
A second.
I think you have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business in Writing, number two, Pokies Bar. Um, Citizens Business and Writing, number two, Polkys BBQ twenty-four hour catering permit. Twenty-four hour catering permit, state of Wyoming, County of Weston. Then under and by virtue of the provisions of section twelve dash four dash five zero two. Subsection B of the state of Wyoming Alcohol Beverage Control Law, the city of Newcastle, County of Weston, state of Wyoming. In ten in consideration of the sum of twenty dollars paid by Rick Schuler. Doing business as Polkys BBQ and Smokehouse of the city of Newcastle. County of Weston hereby license permits and authorize that Rick Schuler. Doing business as Polkys BBQ and Smokehouse to sell alcohol and more beverage. And then upon the premises of Weston County Event Center. For the event more specifically described as follows. Rock Rocky Mountain Elk's Foundation Ladies Evening banquet. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only. Beginning on the sixteenth day of November, two thousand twenty-four at nine AM. Through the seventeenth day of November, two thousand twenty-four at nine AM.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the twenty-four hour catering permit for Polkys BBQ. Starting at nine AM on the sixteenth of November and ending at uh nine AM on the seventeenth. So they're gonna November.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The location, the.
It's at the Weston County Event Center.
But did they say they were operating out of Newcastle or Gillette? They're out of Gillette.
No, it's for Newcastle. They are from Gillette, but they're gonna be on the premises of Weston County Event Center. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, nothing under old business. Um, under new business, number one, pilot planning for water, sewer, garbage. Um, I've been working and talking with other um communities, some in Wyoming. But mostly over the state of Wyoming on places that had to increase their water and sewer and garbage rate. Um, and what they have done and has worked for them. Uh, they started out with a pilot plan and that pilot plan was to have a fixed rate for every month throughout the year. They have software. Um, if they didn't have the software capability, um, they were granted. Those the software because it's to help those who are on fixed incomes or low income. Um, and it would be something I would like to kind of try here. Um, Stacy said that she would have to look and see if the software we have does that. And we would have to figure out what that rate would be. Um, and we would do it as a pilot to see if if it's meeting criteria or if we have to adjust what that is. But at least those who are on a fixed income or a low budget income would know exactly what's gonna be coming out of their account every month. And I can get more information from these other um communities to to work with Stacy and and us on this.
And we can determine who they are, true?
Uh, what they do is they apply for it. They apply for um to be on that. Uh, they didn't really have a standard. Uh, but it was something that helped in their community for those who are on low income or fixed income.
So those people would apply for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so um we would kind of figure out how we do an um an average already. I guess we could figure out an a good average of their yearly.
Right.
And figure out what they would be paying monthly because I'm sure like mine would be different than yours. So.
Levelized billing.
Right, for that, for those individuals. And I just thought, you know, it was a great idea that could possibly help those who could be tremendously impacted by this.
Now, you wanna have a meeting about this with the whole council or do we wanna go to work through committee? How do you wanna handle this? You know what?
Uh, I'd like to try to keep it open with the whole council so then those who attend meetings or those who watch the videos can listen and hear how it's being done. Or we can have them do and come back in and propose it to the council.
When would you like to do that?
Well, our next meeting is the eighteenth and now I can gather more information. Um, so we can either the Sewer Committee on Water, we can meet before then. Or we can just discuss all the information I get or maybe even have someone who can maybe come by Zoom or phone or come in person that may be helpful.
That kind of a hell of a idea to keep the whole council until.
Because we're, I mean, we're all gonna be involved.
We have voter get get authority or get it anyway. It could be good that.
Yeah.
Other utility companies that use the budget planning for those that wanna make sure that they're, they know what they're gonna pay each month.
I just think it would be helpful for them. It's not a surprise to those that maybe think their bills are gonna be less and then all of a sudden it's more and then they have to kind of shovel whatever. I don't know the other important.
At least offer.
But I think first we need to see if our system can do that. If we can't do that, then we gotta see if we can get that software and if we can get it um granted to us. Because um in Colorado, they were able to get it granted to them without any kind of match or anything because it was helping the citizens. Kind of like we have LEAP for electrical and at one time they did water. It's kind of like a program like that. But this pro- this computer program would help girls in Texas tremendously because it would be a lot of work for them to have to try to figure it out.
Right.
Yes.
I just wanna know what do you set your criteria on? Are you setting it on an age? Over sixty-five, over sixty-two, or are you setting it on what they make annually?
Um, the other, there was two different places did it two different ways. One did it on income, one did it on age. So if they had their retired community that they didn't do it specifically on income. Uh, but then they had uh younger folks that were on in low income and getting a lot of government help. That they had to look at it that way. So they did do their side income. Does that make sense? So we have to kind of get that figured out too on our side. But um but I do have different places and and different ways of how we're doing it. They would have just people like that mean financially stable, able to apply. And I could still do a fixed income or like a fixed pay each month. Um, and then at the end of the year, kind of like my gas, either I get a credit towards my next bill or um I get a return back if I never paid. So there it just depends on how we decide we're gonna do it here. And it depends on what software. If our software doesn't do it, what software do we get? But I think right now we're such a fifty fifty when it comes to fixed incomes and low incomes.
Well, I was thinking about my renters because I've probably got seventeen of them that are seniors. And I would like them to at least have knowledge of this and some of them don't get, so I can take their information and that's why I was asking.
As soon as I can get more, that's something I can get through state offices to over to. You know, we can talk about it at the senior center or we'll get that information out for sure. I'm sure the paper will help us do that as well.
Thank you.
But that's what I was kind of working on. I don't know. As soon as I get more information and like I said, um, I know a couple of them would wouldn't mind meeting on the phone to kind of talk about how it really helped their area. Any other questions?
Back to Greg, I mean, we're not gonna change the analysis, right? We're just gonna figure out how to help.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Yes, yeah. We already do the average storing, does that happen?
Right.
So we would just average water.
Right.
And it's a pilot, so after the the pilot, say we say we're gonna do this for a year. Then we could say, okay, this isn't working. Um, and then we can give notice that it's gotta change. You know, one way or another. Okay, that's what I have there. Um, any committee reports? Um, I guess I have one. Um, I met with the hospital, we'll uh last week Tuesday. Um, we it was myself, BMS, um. Uh, Sheriff's Department, um, someone from the school. Um, Christie, I'm not exactly sure what her title is. Uh, but we all met with quite a bit of people at the hospital and we worked on putting a survey together for the community. Um, and when this survey comes out, it's gonna be many ways to address uh the needs of our community. Um, so I just wanted to give a heads up that when the survey comes out, the hospital will be very appreciative. If we can encourage um others to fill it out as well as ourselves. Um, I know we have to go back to go over the final line survey. Um, they're gonna get it out through the through the newspaper, online, on their website. They'll talk about it on the radio and drop it off at the senior center, um, drop it off anywhere that they need to get it dropped off at. Um, but um, um, so that's one of the big things they're working on. Uh, one of the things they wanted to make sure that got out, which is it's, I mean, tomorrow's election day. But the mill levy does not increase anyone's taxes. Um, for those who thought it did, um, it does not increase taxes. It just continues the mill levy since I think it was two thousand three or eighteen. I can't remember it for sure. Um, and then um, and then they are going in a really good forward position with the board and then the interim CEO to the full-time position. Um, and I think our hospital is going in the right direction. Um, just from just meeting with them and discussing with them, um, the things that they're doing and getting the finances in order and things to that factor. But I'm pretty proud of these people who who came in just recently to into these hard shoes to fill. But they're they're in a really good um direction right now, really good board right now. That's all I have on the hospital. Um. Moving on to department heads, did we have a one news?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, council, I believe I sent out an email earlier today. Um, it was just basically giving you some examples of some of the J. Burke ordinances from around the state. Um. The chief and I discussed um what, you know, in his opinion would be the best uh ordinance. And I believe he had said at the time, and don't quote me, it was Casper and Cheyenne if I if those two were on there. Um, and the reason being was that he just thought it was worded better because there were some specifics and the other ordinance that he thought would be kind of hard to basically ascertain and stop. Um, so if this is the, you know, the route that the council wanted to move forward or if there are any edits or anything like that. Um, then I would go ahead and draft that for the council if that's what the council wishes.
I didn't get a chance to finish reading the law, so um. And I don't have a third chance. I mean, I I would feel comfortable with table this to the next meeting because I didn't get a third chance to finish reading my. You know, I don't know about everybody else.
Yeah, right. People are kind of thought the same thing when it says any and the rest of them were the ones that's unmuffled and trying to figure out. If it's got a mucker on it for sure, it'll be straight back.
Yeah, I mean, driving by. You could, yeah. So I think he was he was on the right track with that.
I move that we table the J. Brake ordinance's discussion until next meeting.
Second, because I'd like to read those things too.
We have a tape or we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, council. Um, one other issue I wanted to just make the council aware of. I recently had a ticket that came into the city court and it was under section four dash twelve, public nuisances. And the reason I am bringing it up is in reading um that ordinance. One of the issues that I think the council will see as being an issue is primarily the fact that anyone who owns a dog. Um, under that ordinance would be in violation of said ordinance.
You even own a dog?
So what?
If you even own a dog?
If you own a dog, you would very likely have committed an ordinance violation. It says in the public nuisances section, um, it shall be unlawful for any dog or cat owner to keep a dog or cat that is public nuisance. Or permit a dog or cat to be a public nuisance and each day that such a dog or cat is kept or permitted to be a public nuisance shall constitute a separate offense. A dog or cat shall be deemed a public nuisance if said dog or cat barks, howls or yowls while outdoors at any time of the day or night. Now, prosecuting this. Ordinance, I knew that the person in the likelihood would become guilty. The only issue is it's constitutionally overbroad. And also it's constitutionally vague because, I mean, literally at any time, the city police could go out and pick it. Probably half the people in this room. So I'm asking the council for me to amend that so that there's a little more specificity in regards to um basically the the time. How long the dog is barking things like that.
I think that'd be appropriate way of wording. I would my dogs would do that one too if they go out and see someone in the street.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think definitely it's something. Continues of height, length and type.
Yeah, and just so it's not any bark or howl, um, maybe a timed day. And I can bring a few examples to the council for their um to read over, but under the certain, under the ordinance as of right now, it's. It's everyone in the city more or less.
That was not made up by a dog lover or a cat.
No, it was not.
May I address Stan?
Yes.
On this ordinance. And this is one time I live below the pound. Them dogs bark all night long. I say nothing. And this is one time, an animal needs to have a voice. Because when they howl or bark, sometimes my, I have a King Shepherd down there. I got somebody in my yard when he howls and barks. Otherwise, he's quiet.
And I think that's where double is gonna get to is specify it because the way it's written right now.
We have a big problem because every night at the dog pound, I hear barking, I hear howling. Come on, guys, I live right below it.
No, what I think they're trying to do is somebody that is obsessive and long, long period of time. I mean, we understand it's bark when a rabbit goes by or a car goes by.
There's one of those dogs over there at the pound that howls constantly all my lawn. And that's separate from him. That is not my house. That is not my dogs. My dogs go out and they're gonna, they're, don't people talk? Dogs have to bark once in a while or they get sick.
So you're saying the city's breaking its own ordinance by having a dog at the pound?
I'm just saying, I'm tired of hearing these people complain about animals that bark or howl or if there's a cat. Come on, guys.
No, I I think we understand what you're saying, but I think what is happening.
And this is the first time I've ever addressed.
No, and I appreciate it. I think it's just.
And I've been down there fifty-four years under the pound here, guys. And I've listened to the dogs bark. It doesn't bother me.
See, you could become acclimated.
Just like us to the train.
Yeah, I just think sometimes there's.
Yeah, we're trying to fix the ordinance so it isn't like that.
Yeah, we're trying.
We're trying to fix the ordinance so it isn't like that.
Cause it's nowhere some of these guys on. 'Cause it's nowhere, some of these guys on Seneca, down here, hot rod at night and you can hear them. And they have loud trucks and stuff, but you know what? People's have loud trucks in Newcastle and cars forever. Our kids, some of the adults, we're not gonna just say children, we're gonna say adults too. So come on, there's a lot of noise in this town.
Thank you.
We know.
And I don't complain about any of it. And now we have no trees in my, our house that are down on the ground. Our cottonwood decided to cop a limb, a beam, up way high, thirty-six inches around. My son, James, just took that tree completely to the ground. We counted the rings, two hundred and ninety-five years old. That was here before the town still. So I'm just letting you know about that. But, you know, so don't complain, tell me get the firewood split. I wanna get it split and out of the road, but I can't do it in five minutes 'cause we just took the elm tree down at night, it's gone. So our tree are, are gone.
Well, let the police department know about if town that you're working on.
Yeah, I have, I had to work on it 'cause it's, it's not a fine job. 'Cause that one beam that come off, I had one of the gentlemen with the skid steer come get it, he wanted the wood. Fifty-two inches around, the one James cut, and two fat shacks. So, and I have a picture I found of my grandmother by that tree. A hundred and some years ago, when just the log house was there where I lived. So I've got a lot of history. But I'm gonna tell you, let's not hear about, let's just let the animals. If it gets excessive where it's, it, you know, driving the person crazy, it's been twenty-four hours, come on, that's.
That's what we're trying to change this to. 'Cause right now it doesn't say that, it just doesn't say bark, so we're trying to change it to is excessive.
Yeah, but I was just try, I just stepped up to the platform for the animals. Because what about, um, let's see, what was it in my paper out here? I think it was fifteen, I had this, it was a lady that lived on Wood Street. And these weren't dogs. She had twenty-five elk laying in her front yard, I have the picture. So don't tell me it's just deer that come down here, 'cause there's elk too. They've seen black bear move when I was a kid, used to be black bears that were right in the trash cans. So this isn't, this isn't nothing new. And I'm sorry I stepped up to the plate tonight.
Okay, we appreciate it.
And the animals, you need to be heard from, an animal woman.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Any questions for city attorney, double name?
Yeah, did that guy that ripped us off about the whole thing, give us some money again on the, on the restroom in Del Park? I hope that's all the picture we're gonna.
I wish. I don't know, it's like I have money.
Just funny.
Do we have a, a good motion pass or are we sitting on a discussion?
I think we're still on discussion. Um, all in favor for, um, the motion on the table for, to take, what is that, one? You know, for him to go over that ordinance. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, there was a second. Second, okay. I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes, same side. Um, city clerk treasurer, Stacy. I have nothing to report. Any questions for city clerk? Public work supervisor, Greg Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item I have is discussing the event that happened in the tank. We came up with positive samples on our monthly, on our routine monthly sampling. Three peats we took came back positive as well. Uh, just for total call form, then we told. When we started investigating and doing some investigative sampling, we pinpointed it started with tank number one. The only thing we can find from there, tank number one, is the vent screen. The top clamp broke off and the screen was pulled away from the tank. So that's why we coordinated with three of the four samples being system-wide, proving this is a system-wide issue. That's why we coordinated the tank. We did have the divers in this last weekend, they worked Saturday and Sunday, cleaning and inspecting the tank, and they could not find anything in the tank. We did complete the level-one assessment. We did pinpoint the screen is the issue. The screen has since been replaced and the clamp also replaced. We did have region eighty, EPA, uh, staff on, in town, October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And their level-two, initial level-two assessment, they agree it had something to do with events, but what we don't know. According levels have dropped to below point one bark per million. So we re-sampled today, we'll have to take another sample tomorrow, twenty, sixteen to twenty-four hours apart. After we get the second set of samples, then we can see whether we took care of the problem. It's a, it's a lengthy process when you have something like this happen, so.
If you have taken care of the problem, will the culmination stop?
Hopefully. It depends on what EPA says, uh, we have to do for corrective actions.
Um, I think the biggest question that a lot of people have been asking is about the water being safe to drink.
Yes, it is. There was nothing, if it had E. coli in it, then, then it would not be safe to drink. But total coliform is an indicator bacteria that we use to possibly show there are other things in the water. Unless somebody forcibly put something in there, nothing else is really getting in there. We don't have any bodies of water close by that would hold, say, cryptosporidium or giardia. Our wells are accision wells, so they're pressurized, and there's nothing getting in it, but wellheads themselves. All the well samples came back fine. Before the tank, everything came back clean, it was just our tank. We have one of these every once in a while, and it's unfortunate, and there's, it's difficult to prevent it sometimes.
When we get the results back, can we, can we know if we update the?
Yes. Hopefully sometime tomorrow, they quit doing rush samples. We asked them to rush some samples, and they, energy-wise, quit doing that, so they have to run a full twenty-four hour sample. The Weston County Solid Waste District, uh, their operator, their new operator come and talked to me. They're planning on having an open house on November sixteenth, and their plan is to open the public November eighteenth. Their tipping fee for the new landfill will be seventy dollars a ton is what they, they told me. So we did discuss some other items that they wanted to purchase, and we did an ASIS agreement that I would request, uh, motion to allow mayor to sign the ASIS agreement so we can get the equipment transferred to them.
I move that we approve the, uh, ASIS agreement to move forward with mayor's first signature.
Second.
Thank you, motion and second, any further discussion?
I think that's really neat, you got them to buy all that stuff.
Well, they may, they may be buying one more thing, they talked to me today about it, so we gotta replace. Uh, it's for the current landfill that I got, they don't have way of plow snow. That one's set up for the snow plow, so.
Do we need a roll-off on the ASIS agreement until we have that?
No, we can surplus it later and sell it at a later date.
I'm glad that you're able to sell this stuff so that we're not in the landfill business anymore.
Cool. We won't have any roll-off containers anymore?
That's, we have five containers out there, are next to that wall. There's a damage from being pushed around my equipment that they're caved in on site.
They need to be separate from what we normally do.
Yeah, but these, these are ones we never use in town. There's a damage that honestly, they're gonna go to scrapping if we don't sell them. We're gonna, we're gonna give us sixty bucks a piece out of them for scraps. They wanted, uh, the containers to put smaller items in, uh, people to bring out nails, bolts, this sort of stuff, so they can keep everything contained in their, their transfer station.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes, same side.
Weston County landfill is going to charge for cardboard. So here fairly shortly, we need to decide what we wanna do with the roll-off. I, it's not gonna cost that much to dump the roll-off. The problem with it is more people are gonna try and use it. We already have a big littering issue problem there already. If they can't fit it inside, they usually run it down and walk away.
One of the.
One of the, down at the shop. That was the reason we moved it toward what we did, because we knew we were gonna have a littering issue. Isn't the issue, I recall it wouldn't get any worse, but I have a feeling it will once they realize that they're gonna be charged for the cardboard.
You could set up some of those game hammers and take pictures of those people.
Yeah. And all, all the other people that drive by including yourself. We have about four hundred pictures a day.
I use that, oh, nice, unless you don't get rid of them.
What's that?
I use that roll-off a lot.
And there are a lot of people that do, but there are a lot of people that also use it. You go down there right now, you can see the stuff that's lying around the side that they couldn't get in. We have a person bringing a full-size refrigerator box and trying stuff, and then they couldn't get it in there, so they just threw it on the ground. We have people that have these rolls of cardboard roll of some sort that had something on it. There's six of them lying down there right now. They just came in the night after we left for the day. I'm just concerned about the, I'm just concerned about the, yeah, I know. But I'm concerned about the, the littering issue involved with having the roll-off.
Is Upton still having success with their cardboard recycling program?
I'm not sure of Mark, Mark and I discussed it, so.
I spoke with Mark, uh, it's been a while, but they were able to actually make their recycle, our cardboard recycling program work. So they got a grant for a specific type of container, and then they got their citizens trained to where they were only putting in specific kinds of cardboard, and it was working really well for them. So it might be worth another discussion with Mark to see how it's still going.
Yeah, I can talk to super-dentists, true.
Because, uh, the cardboard, uh, program has been kind of a losing endeavor for the city for quite some time.
We pay fifty thousand dollars a year to recycle cardboard.
We, uh, we were providing it as a public service, and, and then we were able to dump. Now that we're gonna have to start paying the Weston County Solid Waste District to, to, um, process the cardboard or put it in the landfill, I don't, I don't know that we'll be able to continue with it if we don't find another solution.
I will visit with him tomorrow about that.
Thank you.
Along with the solid waste, we've been, we budgeted for a pickup to replace our Hillbirch pickup, it's a nineteen ninety-eight, one ton duty with the dump in. It's ugly, it's bad. The floor is rotting out, there's holes rotting through the floorboard, the heaters don't work in the winter, right? The AC doesn't work in the summer.
It's really broken, wow.
It's, it's worn out, it's way past its day. We found a pickup in Colorado. It's a used two thousand seventeen with thirteen thousand miles on it, just over thirteen thousand, for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety, we budgeted thirty thousand for the pickup. It is a cabin chassis, F forty F three fifty. It's stated that it's ex-government. We, and it has a Myers plow system on it, so we're figuring they probably have a sander on the back and a bow on the front, only worked in winter time. We have a request to be able to purchase the pickup.
You said in the report, Greg, that you'd budgeted for this item?
Yes, thirty thousand dollars.
So you have the money in your budget to purchase the?
Correct.
Is it a diesel?
It's a six-point-two liter gasoline.
What was the make and model again?
Forty F three fifty, two thousand seventeen.
F three fifty, two thousand seventeen, and then, um, yeah, what was the price?
Twenty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. We talked with this car salesman, we'll drive down and load it up and bring it back, 'cause it doesn't have trailer or backup or lights on the back end. Uh, we're gonna check it out before we give him the check. So we'll take a check with us to, to make sure the vehicle is what it says it is.
I move that the city shop purchased a two thousand seventeen Ford F three fifty for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars?
If it passes inspection.
If it passes inspection.
Second.
Thank you, motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All of the votes, same side.
Thank you, counsel. My next item, Mike, just to let you know, Mike Pelsted has resigned. He worked for us for two weeks and decided it wasn't for him, so. We did interview Stefan Smith. We reviewed his references and contacted his, we completed most of the pre-employment screenings. I would request to offer a position to Stefan Smith, pending the rip, results of his pre-employment drug screening, the driving record, uh, starting rate of eighteen dollars per hour.
I move that we allow this hiring to take place as Brendan described it.
One-year probation?
One-year probation.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any further discussion? Does he have experience or any certain experience?
Yes, he's got quite a good recruitment experience, uh, running back, that's different work.
Oh, he has a CBL or?
No, he doesn't have CBL yet. Does he have a dog that barks?
What was that?
I said, does he have a dog that barks? Sorry. Apologize.
Is he from here or is he from?
Yes, I, um, I'm trying to remember. My son was, younger than my son, but my son worked with him and throughout all his younger years, he was doing different things.
He graduated in two thousand nine.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes, same side.
My last item, um, I'll be attending an EPA grant training. New grant opportunities coming about from EPA, so we're gonna, I'm gonna go to Landor and find out about that on November twenty-first.
How long you done to go?
One day. There'll be a day of travel down, one day and then the day of travel back. So it's an eight-hour class, three-eight-hour training.
Cool, that's, that's, that's a neat thing to learn.
We'll see what, we'll see what this grant offers and what we can do to utilize the funding hopefully. Other than that, is there, is there any other questions?
Yeah, what was the bill that we had extra that Stacy sent out to us for eighty-six hundred dollars on the Seventh Avenue project?
That was for the extra equipment. That was for the extra equipment.
Oh, so leftover parts. A lot of times we purchase those leftover parts because we get them for discounted rate. The one-inch curb stops, we saved about ten dollars a piece by him through the project, so. Didn't have a lot of twelve-inch parts on hand, so we bought the twelve-inch parts and some of the eight-inch parts. But just leftover materials.
I got a couple of things, Greg. There's a fire cart, I guess, over next to the old Black Hills plumbing building, the fire cart must be using.
Okay.
I just didn't want it to get too gross before somebody goes and picks it up. And then there's a light pole on Latigo. It's kind of by that vacant lot. I talked to one of my constituents over there and he said he asked the city about the light pole not working and not having any power to it. And he was told to talk to Black Hills Power. So then he talked to Black Hills Power and then they told him to talk to the city. So we're just wondering if.
That's Powder River Pole.
What's that?
That's Powder River Pole, so we got to talk to Powder River.
Okay, so Powder River, cool.
Yeah, I can talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. That's all I have.
Any other questions for Public Works Supervisor? No report from Police Chief Derek Thompson. So claims against the city dated November fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Your Honor, I move that the city pay its bills.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Judge Edgerton?
What happened to the Police Chief?
He's on vacation.